Okay, we'll call the panel of select board to order for their meeting on Thursday, December 28th. The agenda approval, through the minutes of 12:0917, hearing and notice of a decision on that 12:2117, our regular meeting. Warrants, mail, old business, town administrator discussion, road budget, new business gravel purchase. Reminder, last day for nonprofit ballot articles will be 5:00 PM, Thursday, January 18th. I'll repeat that reminder, last day for nonprofit ballot articles is 5:00 PM, Thursday, January 18th. Last day for elected officials petitions is 5:00 PM, Monday, January 29th. Last day for elected official petitions, 5:00 PM, Monday, January 29th, for those out there that wish to run for positions. Okay. Need a motion approved, the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Anything to be added?
Special meeting.
Special meeting, oh yeah, special meeting, because this is normally a suror meeting, right? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Through with the minutes of 12:0917?
So moved.
Second.
All, any discussion on them? All those in favor say aye.
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 There was a town of panel, select board, hearing notice that goes with that, has everybody had a chance to see this? Where it's the town of panel, panel select board in reference to discontinuance.
Hang on, so the one we just did was for the ninth?
Yeah.
So I have to abstain from that, I wasn't there, I'm sorry, I got confused with the next one.
I'll do the, you make a motion to approve it.
I second it.
Alright, I'll do the second.
He can make a motion or second, he just doesn't vote, he has to abstain.
I abstained.
Oh, okay.
So he's abstaining.
Let me see who else wasn't here, Ron. Standing?
Yeah, for the other meeting, I wasn't there.
Yep, okay. Now for the discontinuance, town of panel discontinuance letter, town highway 32, Lavina Road, town highway 61, Renner's Drive. Everybody had a chance to read through this? Will we convene the hearing for notice? And basically, the conclusion was that the public good necessity, convenience of the inhabitants of panel justified the discontinuance of town highway 32 and town highway 61. This decision shall be recorded in the panel and records and a copy sent to Ron Copey. What's your pleasure? You move to sign this, guys?
Move to sign.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You've got two abstentions, right, you went there.
Yeah, I have the original here, I'm gonna pass it down through, three signatures please.
Okay.
Yeah, it's my first chair.
I'll send it back down to you, she can have it.
Her name is Linda.
Linda, she can have it.
Is Julie gonna be able to record it today, though? It's 28.
Okay, that took care of the nine. Alright, 12:2117, regular meeting.
Rules, check rules.
Yeah, there's something missing.
Get a second for that one?
I'll second the 21st.
Okay, any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I abstain, of course. And that takes care of our minutes.
Sue back to listen recording, that can be recorded anytime, the date is the date that this document was signed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counts payable ending 12:2917 in the amount of $96,103.53, of which $82,079 was to do with insurance. Payroll ending 12:2917 in the amount of $8,618.65, which, pleasure, guys?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Mail. Sheriff's report. Patrolled for 26.5 hours a week, this is for November 1st to December 1st, 2017. They handled a total of 53 calls consisting of one 9/11 hangup, three agency assists, two public assists, two suspicious events, one accident, one agency assist, one motor vehicle complaint, five bin verifications, 10 direct patrols all over town, 25 traffic stops all over town, issued four tickets and 21 written and verbal warnings. Then they do their normal property checks. Now, we have a letter from our Board of Listers, Barb Schlesinger, who's the chair of that, probably the sole personnel, if I'm correct. It basically says, "Dear Select Board members, please note, my term ends March 2018, I will not be running for reelection. She has begun to begin a full-time employment in January, not knowing how you wish to move forward with this vacancy, I felt it necessary to have this information when putting together the budget for next year. Please let me know how I can be assistance with this transition in the listers department." Okay, and she provided us with our listers budget, so I want to thank you for that. I'd take a motion to accept her resignation with regret.
So moved.
Second.
I don't know if she's resigning.
She's leaving, she gave us notice, she's gone.
Read that again, Nelson, I think what she's saying is-
Please note, my term is in March 20, I will not be running for reelection.
So she's not resigning, she's just letting you know that she's not running again after March.
But she says she's taking another job in January.
Starts full-time.
Right, but she can still do this anytime.
She can still do Lister.
Until March.
That letter does not say she's resigning.
Oh yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying that she's resigning as of this minute, I'm saying that the way I read this, in March, she won't be doing the job, and she wants to give us heads up.
Right, she's not gonna run again.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's not resigning, her term is just, she's just letting you know.
Well, we'll, we'll change the motion to thank her for forewarning us.
Right. Thank you.
She will continue working until March.
She's working until March.
Well, yeah, because she's not leaving, is, yeah. I got that piece, alright. So the motion is to thank her for giving us a heads up, so we can look at, see what we can do there, solve that. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 And then we should remind everybody that we've got three lister positions open.
Yeah, there'll be three, yeah, there's three positions for listers open, and as I read earlier, last day for elected officials petitions is 5:00 PM, Monday, January 29th. So anyone that's interested in running for listers, please take out your papers. Okay. We took care of the mail. Under old business, town administrator discussion.
Everybody should have their paperwork from last time, I don't know whether you want to do this, we're gonna have to talk about whether we want to approve a job description, which I handed out before, whether it be full or part-time, and we need to come up with salary figures to run an ad, can that be done and open?
It's up to the board, if they wish to move it to executive session, I'll move it to the end of the agenda.
I had passed out this town administrator.
Yep.
Yep, you guys got it. And I thought we'd go through it, and add, subtract, do whatever you want to do with it, and come up with a decision.
How you wanna do it, guys?
Probably take a little longer.
You wanna move it to the end?
Yeah, let's move it to executive and run the personnel.
At the end of the meeting. So, we'll table it until the end of this meeting. Okay, with that, are all the board in agreement with that? Yeah.
I'm okay with it.
Okay, let's move to road budget. What do we got to do with road budgets?
I think this is what we've given night.
There's something here somewhere.
We should have a comparative road budget dated 12:28, that's what we're working from this evening.
Okay.
All figures have been entered to the best of our ability, and we should be here to go from.
Have you looked at this, Joel?
Yes.
Okay, any spots that we should be concerned with or look at?
The only thing I brought up last week you guys weren't here, is the year before, we carried 143,000 into the budget. We put a good chunk in the black topping. Do you want to leave that as is, because I did, so far?
I saw something here somewhere. It was provided to us by, find it.
So with that, we also have 54,200 left in it. So if you guys, it gets up to you, how you wanna handle that.
We also want to note that this year we have less undesigned needed surplus for the road funds.
That's what I'm looking for.
That's what we're saying, yeah.
Right, it's already in your, it's in your print, it's already data entered. I put it in as if you're going to do it.
So.
So last year, the designated, undesigned needed surplus of 143,636 went into, to give back to the taxpayers to offset the taxes. This year, it's 16,391.43. The difference is because you ran your budget, you used your money.
Okay, so it's about 125,000.
Right, and what Joel's saying is, last year, you put 150,000 in the black topping fund.
Well, we put a little in, on different.
Right, in different areas, but the biggest part, so you, you put like another 50,000 extra in the black topping, do you want to leave that in the expense line, or in the fund balance, or do you want to take that out?
He gave me that, but the fund balances, I don't know what I did.
Be in your purple folder.
Use, use.
There's 54,000 left in your fund balances of 1214, in your black topping.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, you guys got it.
I knew I saw it earlier.
Here, Nelson.
I got it, I got it.
Oh, okay.
I just said he put me in colorblind and.
So we, we'd end up with 204, too, you know, in total next year. I'm saying, you know, it's up to you guys.
Well, what do you got to black top next year? What are you telling me?
Ronnie had my wish list there, I don't know what I did with it. We had.
Well, you were looking for, we were looking for, you were looking for South Stream Road.
Well, that I'm gonna put in, yeah, yeah, that I was gonna put in.
We were looking for 45,000 on Burnington Road, overlay for Center Street, Dean Road, Chum, Blacktop, Hidden Valley, Mason Hill South, Snake Hill, we'll do after the project, Maple Grove Road, it's a class two, Valley View, we talked about that, 40,000 we need, so hit one.
So the, so-
There's a list, there's a laundry list.
So what was the total amount of that list that he made up?
We didn't even add it up, it was just-
We didn't add it up, because-
Let you know that there's a lot of black top.
There's plenty to pick from.
Yes.
Alright.
Another question is, what are we looking at for equipment purchases? It's coming, are we looking at a truck?
We should, if, if, but, we could replace the 2,008, we're having so much problems, we have so many problems.
If I know the tandem, what are you looking to buy?
I don't know, we have 75, which'll stay in there, Ellen, or?
You have, right now, in your equipment funds, you've already spent some, so, because you have payments to make, so-
Well, that's what I-
You have 69,195.77 left as of December 14th.
Okay.
And some of that's gonna go, right, we have another payment, I think, I have to look.
We have one more in February.
Right, and that one might not come directly out of that, because of the way, right, I have to look into that, so, but that's what, 14,000 or something, that one?
14,500, I think.
Yeah, that one, that one's an old one, and is booked differently in the accounting system, so.
So that one will be done.
So, okay, yeah, that one will be done.
So, I guess the question I would ask is, you know, we're sort of bouncing around here a little bit.
Still wanting to time them.
What's the black top?
Let's finish the black top first, then we'll come back to this, because I think we'll probably do a lease purchase or something to do that.
This is what I kinda did on the black top, these were the ones, this one, South Stream, I was gonna save for-
Class two, you're gonna try a grant?
In, in, this one, we talked about Valley View, you're welcome to have that, Nelson.
Okay, yeah, so basically, what you're looking at, though, is, you're gonna try to get a grant for the class two stuff, like we always had, because, I mean, we're gonna get it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the question I would ask you is, if you don't get that grant, is it critical that the South Stream Road will be done next year, or are you more looking at doing some of these other ones that you've got listed here, that aren't class two?
The only thing is, with that, if we keep doing our class twos-
We won't have anything to ask for grants.
Yeah, and we're, you know what I mean? I think it's kinda our turn in the pickle barrel for-
Let's ask.
A pretty good grant. It, they're usually April 15th or due in, and we find out by June or so, don't we, on them? So, you know, we can put a plan together, what we're gonna do if we don't.
Well, Maple Grove's class two, also.
Yeah, that needs a lot of work, that just, I ran it through that program, and they popped up as the ones that really need.
Well, what I'm looking at is, if you take those two out-
Yeah, yeah.
You're, you know, it's half your budget, what you're budgeting for this thing, so, and you said what, you'd have about 200,000 if you leave it the way it is, 150 plus what you have there already?
204.
Yeah, which, and you got 215, if you did everything other than the two class two roads, which, I'm not saying that's what you would do.
Yeah, yeah.
So, to me, it feels like you got enough there, I wouldn't put anymore there, and wait and see if you get the grant.
Put anymore there?
He wants to know if you're going to take some away.
No, I don't think we should. I know we got problems, but, but the one thing these people holler about is their roads.
Yeah, no, I agree with you.
I think there's other things, if something, you want to really tighten up on something, maybe you push the truck another year, or you do something of that nature.
We can do that, too.
But if you don't fix these roads, I don't blame the people who come beating us up. That's where, let's face it, when they put their tax dollars into this, what do they get? That's me, now you guys-
And I think it's important, too, that we finish the projects we start, too, as far as paving goes, too.
Yeah.
And that way there, when they come to do again in 15 years, or whatever it is, we're not back to-
You know, then, the figures, I figured at 65 dollars a ton. This last year, it was 6240. I'm not really looking for it to be that cheap this year, maybe, it depends what fuel does, as we all know, so.
It's like a sine wave.
So it could be up, or it could be down, and some of them, I could pare down a little bit, too. I went on program recommendations when I figured them.
Well, let's, for me, I'm just starting this thing, let's leave it where it is, and then if we have to come back to it, we'll come back to it.
Yeah.
You guys okay with that?
Yeah. That's what I was thinking, too, you're welcome to keep that, Joel, I'll print out another copy.
And now we get back to this, the other bigger ticket item is the equipment, and if we bought another truck, what are we paying for the lease purchase on the tandem? We bought this one, right?
No, the tandem we bought.
Five-year, five-year note.
Yeah, do you know what a five-year notice on something like that?
Do you know what it was, Ellen?
I don't remember the payment, you didn't ask me.
I can pull it, I got it right there.
Okay. I didn't bring my keys to open the house. I think it's like 40, 30, something, yeah.
Yeah, versus us trying to pay another 170 grand.
Right.
46.
And, and we also know that this year is our last year on our backhoe.
Right, that's 16,000.
It's our final payment on that.
Yeah, yeah, that'll be done.
And that's still in good shape? Backhoe, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And this other thing that you took on the lease purchase, the-
This excavator.
Is that, that's, that's going well, right? And not looking at-
Yeah, like I say, we put 600 hours on it in six months, so.
So we would still be keeping that, use that.
We financed what, one, we didn't finance the whole thing, right, Linda?
Yeah, because we did the lease purchase on it, I put that in.
Tandem, 26,000 each year plus interest.
For how many years?
Five.
We're on payment two in September.
Okay.
It's not that bad, really.
We're on payment two of five.
Because we paid for some of it.
This year.
Because we, because we paid like 75 up front, we didn't do the whole, we didn't borrow the whole 200,000.
Yeah, I was gonna say, from what I just heard, we don't have that much in equipment.
Right, is this the only equipment you're going to buy in 2018?
Well, that's what he's talking about.
Because we just skipped, we should've, we should, we should've replaced that truck this year, we voted to continue it. And we've already skipped another year, so I think we're now, we're-
I'd also like to do something with a mower, we've had that quite a few years, it's getting pretty whooped, we're either gonna have to buy a head and put it on the old mower, or buy a whole new mower.
That's the one with the arm?
How much is that?
I haven't priced him yet, Jason, I'll be honest with you, I wanted to look around a little bit and see, maybe we'll go a rotary this time, which is a little better for the trees.
Yeah.
We can also get a rotary head for the excavator, too. But I don't think you want to spend the summer mowing with that.
Right.
But it's a good brush, tree clearing tool.
To me, the priority would be the dump truck, which we rely on a lot more, I think, for winter months, I mean.
Well, we're operating twice a year, so you need trucks, so I think that's reasonable.
The mower, I'm guessing, 6,800 bucks, that positive, no, I don't know.
I can't believe it's a, that's not a killer of the budget.
Not at all.
I think that sort of stuff-
But if you're gonna say-
You should be right in the vicinity of 70,000 when you roll over into the next budget, I mean, it's gonna be 660,000, then, he put in 75, for this budget, if you left it, is 130.
So if we're gonna do a truck, we'll have a good chunk there, too.
Plus, plus have some money for, like, the mower.
When we, when we bought the tandem, we are down, I think we put 70,000 out on it.
Right, and pretty much depleted, see, that's the problem, we haven't been able to build it back, you haven't been, we're trying to build a backup.
We didn't have to, but we did, because we had the money at the time.
Right, right, which was a good idea, because it made the payment less.
Yeah, well, I think we should do something similar to that again, you just want to make sure you got some things there, if you gotta buy this small equipment you're talking about, different things.
We need to make sure financing, where we're gonna finance, we can do the same thing we did before, you check through where you buy, and I check through the banks, and see where the best rate is.
Okay, so, I'm not hearing from the other end of the table, what do you think, are we buying another tandem?
Do we need another tandem, or we need a single axle?
We might go with another single, actually.
I'm asking the question.
I'm asking a question from him, see what he needs.
Yeah, I think I'd go with another single, I don't think we want two tandems.
How's the tandem work on our roads?
It works really well.
Yeah.
It's just, you know, it's longer anyhow, and you get the plow stuck out there, you get on a lot of these shorter roads, it's tougher to turn around, that's why.
That's why I think you're right, with buying a single, because of the plow we're doing, you can run the tandem where you know it can run, and you can run these others.
And you can run the single, yeah, yeah.
What's the price difference, Joel? I don't know, I'm just, for budget.
Well, tandem, we gave 200.
Yeah.
212.
212.
212, I'm guessing with new plow.
And they, it was 180 for the complete, single axle was 180.
Yeah, there wasn't a lot of difference, really wasn't.
Yeah, I was gonna say, they're usually-
There wasn't a lot of difference.
They all gotta have the engines and the rarons and the rest, it's the box.
They give you anything, the old one, trade-in?
They should, is what we're hoping on, because it's 2008 or 9, 9 maybe, they should, we've spent a lot of money, there's a lot of new parts hanging off it, and even before I came, they, that was, them years were not a good.
Well, what we could do is go out to bid for both, go out for the single, go out for the tandem, then see what the prices are, then make up our mind based on the price we get. That way there, instead of just going out for the one thing and saying, ah geez, we shouldn't have done, let's get the price for each one, and see what they bid, then we can go from there.
Yeah, there's not a lot of difference.
Well, but, you know, sometimes 20,000 makes a big difference over that budget.
Yeah, yeah, no.
But basically, let's, so I'm hearing that, yes, we're gonna buy another truck this year?
I would need it.
Okay, so I'm gonna say, yes, we're gonna buy a truck, and we need the budget accordingly for that. And is there enough in our budget from what you got put into this now, to do that?
Not to do-
Not to purchase the whole.
Not to do the whole thing.
Not to purchase the whole thing.
No, but to do a purchase-lease type thing?
Down payment.
You do it a down payment, you don't do purchase-lease, you do a down payment.
And then just finance.
And finance the rest.
And we finance the rest out?
Like we did with the tandem.
And we did with the last backhoe, we bought two of the last cat backhoe.
Right, that's the one that we're almost paid off.
And those things seem to work good when we do it that way, so, yeah, so let's, and if we got enough money to do that, then let's look at it that way. Okay, so now we haven't taken anything out of our budget yet, so.
But I'm just, and also remember, we're gonna put money down, but you also have to remember that we're gonna have payments coming out of it, so you can't say, oh, we have 150,000, let's put down 100,000, you gotta remember that you're gonna have other money coming out, okay? Just reminder, put it in your hand.
We have our 26,000 dollar payment coming out.
And 14, right?
Well, that one just, it was paid every September, correct, Linda? So that one's already come out of this fund balance right now.
Oh, so that one's done.
That one's done, until next September.
So you gotta make sure you got it there for next September, and if we do this, then we gotta make sure we got-
We have another one, right, so if you're going to, so it depends on what year you're talking about purchasing this truck, are you talking about FY '18, or the one we're budgeting for FY '19? When do you want to purchase?
Well, it'll be in the 18, 19 budget, right, 19.
You're in 18, 19.
Yeah, you're 18, 19 right now.
You're 17, 18 right now.
You would have to buy before July.
You're 17, 18, right now.
17, 18 right now.
And 18, 19, but you'd buy in July, 18, 19.
Right.
So, that's when you would look at-
Right when it would roll over.
So do we want to look at putting a little more in that equipment fund, then, if we're gonna look at buying a mower, for now, and see what, see what it looks like at the end?
Did, well, basically, your budget's done, so look at the top line right now.
Look at the end, and see what's going down.
You are at the, right, the very first page on the top?
Yep.
Yeah.
Tells you where we are right now.
Yeah.
And you look at where you were last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. We need it, Joel?
You're about 80,000 in there.
Just spare him.
More than that.
More than that.
180.
Thank you.[1755.12] Thank you.
So, if you want to try to balance, you have to get rid of a hundred and eighty, and if you want to do the stuff you want to do, you're gonna go up a hundred and eighty.
Right, and I have, I have a couple of questions, too, on the budget while I'm here with Joel, just quick. Um, we still have contract plow in there, do we really need that? Is that just to catch, just in case it's a huge, really huge storm and you need backup?
That's kinda why I did it.
Okay.
I thought about that, too. No, I guess we don't need it.
Right.
How much is in that line?
Two thousand.
Yeah, I don't even know for sure.
Sound enough.
Not, it's not a lot, but, and, and then.
And then if you do need somebody, you're better off to have a couple in there.
Yeah.
Right.
But don't forget, we've also got another employee since the last time we.
Yes, yes.
Another full time.
And all you do is pray you don't get a super storm.
Right, right, but the thing is, is we're not working with a four crew, we have a five crew now, but every now and then, I know you may have to call him, I'm just asking. And we budget for guardrails now, are we work, working on those, because that's five thousand?
Well, I kinda hoped, you know, it's a pretty expensive proposition, that we could kind of roll, wow, kind of roll that.
It doesn't roll it over.
I know, that's.
Guardrails do not roll over.
Let me ask you a different question.
Five thousand doesn't do much for rail.
What you need to do.
No, that's what I'm saying, that's why I was kinda hoping.
Well, here's why.
It doesn't roll.
When you're done with the Snake Hill project, are you gonna put guardrails up there?
Yeah, you sure?
I was gonna say, it's a pretty steep thing.
Yeah.
So when, when do you expect to actually do that project?
We get the grant, let's see what happens.
So you might need guardrails here next year?
Wouldn't that be included, though? The guardrails wouldn't that be included in the grant?
Probably in the grant, actually.
In the bid, you could.
In the grant, we'd wanna make sure.
Can't you use some of what you got there already?
But you gotta have matching for some of this grant, you gotta have money.
I understand, I understand.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, we have, you have to look at.
Yeah, because.
Because I was, the stuff doesn't, that doesn't roll over, it's not a fund, it doesn't roll over.
Well, that's one of the reasons why we talked about having a capital fund on this
Let me ask you a question on the, on gravel crushing. Is, is that enough money, what we have in here, you think that's enough to do what we need this year?
Well, now, here's another thing we need to talk about at some point.
We need to win the lottery.
Yeah, we need one.
Which we'll discuss at a.
Okay. So what I've heard is, is that we're leaving the blacktop, we need to leave where the equipment is, just because of what we're gonna possibly do with equipment, uh, guardrails. We know we need guardrails in several places, and you're telling me five thousand dollars doesn't do a whole lot, so. Better to be safe than sorry there.
Signs, you gotta, gotta order some signs, speed limit signs and stuff right now, so you're gonna use some of that.
We have any money coming back? What about the culvert on, did we get that money already?
Just came back. It's not on your, on your news sheet yet, but it did come back on ninety.
Ninety-four, five.
Ninety-four, five, thank you, Linda.
So that'll.
Where does that end up?
That will end up back in the culvert.
Box culvert fund.
Okay. So the, so the next culvert we're doing.
So let me ask you a question, roadside and brush, uh, general contract services, is that true work?
Yeah, yeah. We put some money in to have, you know, around the power lines, to have contractors come in with a crane, or a bucket truck, or whatever, to, like we did last year.
So that puts your box culvert back up to like a hundred and thirty-five thousand?
Yeah.
And we got another big one coming.
I did actually figure that for my own.
Okay, yeah, that just came back.
How are we coming, are we working on the one up by Shiloh, that one, culvert, or we, where we at with our culvert plan there?
Well, like I said, you know, um, I'm gonna, I will put in for it, you know what I mean?
Yep, well, I'm just looking at that, that's back in there.
Like I, I told these guys last week, and, you know, we, um, you know, how much can we bite, bite off, uh, twenty percent? You know, just say for the heck of it, suppose we got the Snake Hill, and our share was around sixty thousand, um, then we got the, the black topping, say if you want two hundred thousand, there's another forty, there's a hundred, and, uh, just for the heck of it, say we got the culvert up there on, on Mount Anthony Road, the other one, for two hundred and some, you know, well, it's a hundred and seventy-five, so, you know, hopefully, if we do actually, some of these, like that culvert up there, we could put off till the next year.
Well, I see the culvert fund, I think the culvert fund's gonna cover our culvert program. What I'm more worried about is the black topping, which, you know, it's, unless we get a grant for the black topping, we're hurting, uh, because that fund has really shrunk from what it used to be. And basically, uh, the other one gets down to this equipment fund, those are the two, three we seem to be really hurting. But what I don't see is, is, I'm more worried about, you know, we didn't even talk about the bridge, you know, which down there, I don't know, the last time we did a bridge, it was, I don't know, what, five million bucks or something, down there in North panel? We had to pay, what was it, five percent?
Last time we talked on Main Street Bridge, that's a million dollar deck.
Yeah.
Just the deck is a million dollars.
That's what I'm saying, you know, you got all this stuff.
And if we, and nowadays, they don't give you five percent, usually you're ten or twenty percent, so.
Yeah.
So it's, that's where I, I see that we, we planned, and I think we've done some good funds for things like that, what we haven't done is for something that falls out of the sky that we don't know about with grants, that, like you've been doing with the B C R C, whether it's this water runoff control and things of that nature.
This is kinda what I put together, you know.
Yeah, gravel purchase, that blacktop. What's the story with this whole water runoff, and the grants and the projects with that? Do we have to have matching money for all of those, when we start doing those things?
There's some of these, like.
Snake Hill Road, is, I know what that is.
This one. Now, this one, they're gonna pay for all the materials, and we're gonna eat the labor, so there'll be no.
No match, okay.
This one, I didn't really put in for, this one wasn't a real expensive one yet. That one, you know, you'd have a big match.
This is the, this is the first one, large one, when we go up that road?
Yeah, yeah. But it started out, it wasn't too bad, um, depends on the A and R.
That was a squashed culvert, wasn't it?
Squashed, yeah. Uh, this one, next to County Road, is starting to drop off on the end.
I was saying.
It should be addressed, um, that probably would be a concrete box culvert. Then I did talk to the A and R guy about, I was gonna put in for the heck of it, you know, for a grant for that. You're looking at around two hundred thousand.
Yeah, see, another forty grand we have to put, if we got the right.
And then your blacktop, of course, you got for that. If we get, these need doing, that we can do with that money our own.
Yeah, yeah.
We need to do that before we.
Yeah, so, so I guess what I'm, I'm seeing.
This, I did add to the, the lease, only because we got twenty-two, eight fifty coming out a year, we stay with a excavator, and, you know, I would like to wrap like a hammer, or a roller, if we need it, so. I went up a little bit, and then, of course, this, we'll talk about after.
Yeah, I'm just looking for, like, what you're talking about with the guardrail or something. If we had a capital fund, like we do in a general fund, even if it isn't much to start with, forget putting in, where you got a guardrail, put five or ten thousand dollars, if you use it this year, you use it, if you don't, then you got twenty thousand, next year, and if one of these surprises come up, what I worry about now is the state is passing all these regulations, and the next thing you know is we gotta do some major work along a stream, or we gotta do somewhere else.
Yeah, yeah.
And we don't have the money.
Yeah, yeah. But I look at it this way, if we do have to do some major work, they probably ought to come up with some money if we can't afford it.
Well, they might come up with some of it, but you gotta match part of it usually.
Well, yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Joel, I wanted to pass along that, um, I recently learned that if, if some of these culverts involve protection of the fish, Orbis is offering some grants, and that information was passed along to the B C R C. I don't know the extent of the grant funding, but it's another source of funding that I, I wasn't aware of before, I don't know how much, but to keep it in mind, it's something to talk to Michael about.
Yep.
Yeah, well, what I've found with these programs, is the sooner you jump on board, when it's new like this, the more money you can get, as long as you've got enough to match, because then you can get these things sold. You wait too long, the money dries up upstate, and then all of a sudden, we're handling more than we should. Uh, that, that's, I guess, where I'm at, I just want to make sure that we're ready for it.
They set about two years for the municipal road permit, general road permit.
Okay.
At least two more years, they'll have some pretty good grants to try to get your roads.
Now, the more reason to start a capital fund, I think, in the roads.
We.
Not a lot, but gives you two years to put a little bit in each year versus having them come and hit a big one.
We have to do.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
We'd have to have a ballot audit process to create it.
We have to do a mile and a half a year. That means good crowns, good ditches, common sense stuff, really, but I mean, you know, their rulings over five percent, stone lined, ditches, good crowns.
It's a lot of work.
There is.
It's a lot of work we have to do.
To, to get our thirty-five miles of segmented roads done, we need to do about a mile and a half a year, because you have twenty years.
To get it up.
You gotta be up to snuff in twenty years. There's something to, this year, I think, we're gonna have to buy into that municipal permit. And I don't, last time I knew it was like four thousand bucks or something.
Yeah, but you know it's something.
And then it's supposed to be cheaper after that, but I think the first year that we put in for it.
Isn't that supposed to be for two thousand eighteen, July?
Yeah, that's what, that's what, I missed. All right, well, just, I'm just trying to think of a way to get prepared so that we don't slam, so we don't have a large.
Yeah, no, I know.
Right, and the other thing, Nelson, I want you to look at on this budget, just, just because, I mean, you can look at your top line of what has to be raised by taxes, but go to the final page and look at two thousand eighteen, actual total expenditures we budgeted for last, the, the year we're working in right now is eight hundred and seventy-three thousand. This budget's at nine twenty-six. Your fifty thousand dollars difference, I mean, that, that, and it's, so that's not a lot of money, it's just that, because we, because Joel did what he was supposed to do with his budget. If you budget it, you spend it, so there's nothing to give back, but everybody's always like, oh, give back, give back, but you budget, you budget to, to spend, and that's what they vote to do, is to do the improvements. So if, if, if we do have, you know, an increase this year, we, we've kept a pretty flat budget for many years, and we need to start looking.
Well, go back to twenty seventeen.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
You only had six thousand bucks to put over.
Right, that's what I'm saying, is.
It's, for some reason, we had a, a burther that year, to put it up to that amount of money, a hundred and forty-three.
Right, and that, because a lot of stuff.
Well, that was a changeover year, kind of.
That was a changeover year, a lot of stuff didn't happen, so there was extra.
Well, yeah.
And that's what happened, that we kinda had a little lapse there, where we were just kinda.
Well, we were going through new road permitting, there's a bunch of stuff that caused that.
The switch over, right.
Yeah, yeah. Otherwise, that wouldn't have been anywhere near that large.
Exactly, my, my saying.
And this year, too, we, we now are putting back, the money back into proper funds, otherwise you'd had ninety-four, five.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Plus our other one, we got back twenty-eight.
Right, and that's because you guys, if you're just, if you remember, you voted, when the money comes in, I just automatically, it goes back into the funds where it came out of.
Yes.
Right.
And not just into the revenue, which becomes an undesigned surplus, now it's going right back in where it belongs.
Yes, otherwise, we, we only end up putting it on another line, and make them pay for it anyways.
Exactly, so, so it's just.
It makes more sense to have actually.
Exactly, you're giving it back to them in the long run.
Some of it will, like the forty thousand, just go back in generally, right? That's not.
What forty thousand?
For the Man Hill project.
What's he talking about, Linda?
Reimbursement?
Reimbursement for the Man Hill. We have forty thousand coming in for that, too.
Is that a grant?
That's grant, and it's not, it's not like a culvert.
It's not a, right, then that would just go back into, as a revenue that comes in.
Undesignated, in the end will end up undesigned.
It will end up showing, undesigned, because it has no specific fund it was taken from, it was just taken from separate expense lines, so it will just come in as, as money back to your budget, yes.
Yeah, I think.
Thank you, I forgot about that one.
Yeah, I think, you know, the P is, is that, but it also shows by explaining things like that, that we're not doing this just on the backs of the taxpayers. There is, we're working hard to try and get federal and state money in here as well.
Right.
So we aren't just paying upstate, we're actually getting some of it back for use, which is good.
There's really not a lot of numbers to play with in, in the road budget.
Well, I'm glad that you pointed out the fact, it's, it's only like fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
It's fifty-three, too.
Right, that, that it, I mean, the actual expenditures, it's just that there's less revenue on that side, because there's nothing to give back to them as undesigned surplus.
See these?
So that's the difference.
I don't know if you ever saw.
Yeah, I have this list, I forgot about that one, so that one came back, and that one has come back.
Yeah, so we're still waiting, we got this one.
Yep, that was another one, yeah.
That one we put in for, and then, yeah, so.
Right.
So, yeah, that one, that came back in the fourteen, too, for the, um, Grandsonade project.
Yes.
So we got that one back. So the only thing we're out right now is.
I will, I'll have to look it up, just because it's the forty from the Man Hill, yeah.
Okay, just, we know we'll be asked this on the floor, and I know, I know he's asking too. Yeah, we're, we're trying to explain it, here, as we go along, with, with this, uh, hundred and forty-three thousand, between that and sixteen thousand, and the year before that, six thousand. I think we need to, we, there was a, a changeover of staff, uh, there was a lot of type work staff, uh, there was a lot of type work that we had planned that did not occur during that time.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and we need to make sure that we have a way of explaining that.
Well, remember you also built the salt shed that was higher than originally anticipated?
This year.
Was the year that we had the six thousand.
That was the year we had the six thousand.
Yeah.
It's because the salt shed took all the.
The extra.
Extra.
So it took all the extra this year. I'm, I'm playing devil's advocate. That's the way they're gonna ask the question.
Because we purchased equipment, and, um, we did a lot of work on the roads.
Gravel, sand.
Well, we blacktopped a lot this year.
That's what I mean. You did blacktopping.
Blacktopping's a big one, yeah.
Yeah, we did a lot of blacktopping.
There's a lot of stuff that's going on.
You know, but, but.
Maintenance repairs.
But what they wanna, yeah, they, they wanna hear details. They don't wanna just hear the.
New employee.
You know, their salaries change. Uh, but those are the sort of things, I think, that they'll be made aware of, is what you need to do. Uh, and again, I, I like the fact that we can state that it's only a little, about fifty thousand more than the year before our actual budget.
Yeah, if you look at the bottom line of the expenditures itself, the expenditures have only gone, you're only budgeting fifty thousand more. It's the revenue side that isn't offsetting it, so.
But it shows that we're doing the work. Where the year before, we didn't get to the work.
To the work, exactly.
And I think that's the answer, is we're doing, we're doing all we can for you. We're trying to make the roads better and safer.
And, but, you know, that, you have to realize, some of this money is coming back in too as revenue.
Right. Which is good. It will come back in.
That we took, yeah, that we took out, so we may have, you know what I mean?
For this year.
But that'll be.
For this year. This is.
We won't know until June.
Yeah, we won't know until June, any of that, the final.
Yeah. Okay. And I'm okay with that. I'm actually okay with the budget the way it shows. It's just that I would run a, a capital budget line request, and I don't know.
And what amount would you ask to put in to start it?
I think five or ten thousand bucks. We don't wanna start high. I think what we're looking at is, I heard we had two years before we have to really worry about these things. If we can get some money in there. You know, I don't know what, I assume some of these projects that they're talking about aren't gonna be big ticket projects, but they're matching all the time, and you're gonna have a bunch of them by the sound.
Yeah.
You're not gonna have one or two. You're gonna have a bunch of them because, let's face it, a lot of our dirt roads run along streams.
Yeah. Anything within a hundred feet of a stream or so is segmented.
We budget it and then ask for it? We ask for it, and then it goes in the next budget?
That's right.
We have to do, we have to check the last time that we created a fund.
Because I don't, right, cause I don't remember.
But you do have to think, if we do get these grants this year.
Right. So let's look into it, you know.
Yeah, then you're gonna let us know.
Yep.
Whether we can actually put a dollar amount, if we have to say, create a capital fund for the road, or we can actually say.
It'll, it'll do, it'll, when we look up the one, how we did the municipal building fund, because we put money in.
We started that, we just have to see.
We just have to see how we worded it and how we showed it in the budget.
And where the money came from, if we had to show it in the budget, or if it just came out of.
Whatever.
Part of the money, right.
And when do those ballot articles have to be ready? For, for, for us, by the time that we're all done. This one here, this would be yours.
They're just like.
This isn't a nonprofit. We just have to be completely done with everything by February.
Yeah, before we won the.
Right. February first, okay.
So, but yeah, if we can do that, I think that's the way to go. And again, we're not, then we're gonna be up sixty. I mean.
So you're estimating that you start with like ten thousand when we get to research this?
Yeah, because then the following year, we'll know more about what we have to do. And then if we need to put more in the fund, we'll put more in the fund.
And if we don't, then you can put less, or you can do whatever, like we do with the other.
Because he said that there's a multitude of these projects, and some of them might be small, and that's what we can start with initially, and then work the way we have to. It's just the, we have to have them done by a certain amount of time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Usually give you a couple of years. So like the Snake Hill, um, with the federal money, there's a lot that goes with it, the preparation and stuff. So we may not actually get to do the project until the following year.
And we'll get the engineering and all that stuff out of the way.
Everything, the permits.
The municipal building fund's a perfect one. It wasn't out long ago that we could find.
That one's not too bad of a project, I don't think.
Okay. Okay. Uh, what, what do you think, guys? We're talking at this end of the table. Are you okay with this budget, the, the way it looks? Or you think we should be changing some, one of the lines?
Study it maybe?
I think we need to study it and have some more discussion.
Right. You have enough time to, to look this over another week. Not a problem.
I think we need to.
Any glaring out at anybody?
I think we need to try to figure out, if you're talking about a mower, try to get some numbers on a mower and.
Maybe a couple of quick calls to see where prices of trucks are right now. Just to.
Yeah. And then you can tell us where we are, because we, the equipment fund, you know, we're looking at seventy-five thousand in there, and I forget what we had. Really, if you got a couple of payments going out, you wanna put something down, we need to know.
When you look for a mower, can you look for a front mount rather than a rear mount mower or not?
Mid mount.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That back mount's harder to drive than.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely, definitely. Yeah.
Other questions, concerns, comments? We wanna thank you, Joel, and thank both, uh, Ellen and Linda for getting this together for us the way you did. It helps us a lot. Takes a lot of time.
Do you wanna revisit this next week?
Yes.
Like to get, like, the road completely done?
Yep.
Transfers done, so that we can spend the rest of the time just concentrating on the general?
Sounds like a plan to me. Let's do it.
Paul, what's, well, you're gonna start the general next week or no?
We're revisiting this one here, and we'll see where we are with the general.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's, I, I think that's a good way to go, because we'll revisit this, see what we got. And the other one, we might, we'd do the general, it's what we're doing with the road tonight. Just do a quick thing, and then have one more and do the general.
It's, it's ready, so you can look at it whenever.
Okay, super.